Going to start the recording and we are live. So this is Andy Port, Planning Director. I'm just going to be checking our audience to see what we have for attendance and migrate anybody over who might be in the audience who's a panelist. Hi, this is Andy Port, Planning Director. I think we have Counselor Agarwal here. I just want to make sure he's properly connected.
I'm on my, for some reason, my video is not working, but I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I'll defer to the chairs.
All right, well, I will call the joint hearing with the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Committee to order, and I will take a roll call of the Planning Development Committee, Counselor Igerman.
Here.
Counselor Wallace is not, so we are the two for this evening, Andy.
Thank you.
And this is Bonnie Sontag, Chair of the Planning Board. I will call roll for the members who are attending tonight. Rick Tainter.
Here.
Alden Clark.
Here.
Tanya Hartford.
Here.
Don Walters.
Yeah.
And Bonnie Sontag here.
All right, so we are. Bonnie, do you want us to kick it off, or do you want me to?
You call the meeting to order and do the agenda, and then we'll start the presentation.
All right, so calling the meeting to order for the public hearing tonight to discuss ordinance 068, which is an ordinance to amend Section 6C of the new report zoning ordinance as to the number of residential structures permitted on a lot. I would like to hand it over to Chair Sontag to go through the presentation that was pulled together to discuss what the ordinance is all about, if that's all right. Do you agree?
Thank you. There's a second piece in there of a change of use. Change to the definition for Use 103. I just wanted to add that to the agenda. It's, it came up in discussion with regard to 6C, and we put them in together. First, I want to start by thanking you, Counselor Shan, for sponsoring this amendment. It's coming as a result of the Planning Board having worked with this Section 6C for several years and realizing that there were some proposed changes that would make it more useful and usable. And so Vice Chair Rick Tainter and I will be making, what we hope will be a short and concise presentation on the elements of it and comparing the proposal with the existing to make it easier for discussion. At least that is our intent. So could I have the second slide, please? The purpose of Section 6C is that it authorizes the Planning Board to grant a special permit to allow two single-family dwellings on a lot in a district zoned for two-family dwellings. And you see highlighted there the key elements. It's allowing two single-family dwellings on one lot, but it must be within a two-family district. Very brief history. It has existed since 1984, and until 2004, it only required a finding from the Planning Board. From 2005 to 2008, the Planning Board heard this request under a special permit, which meant that we could negotiate with the applicant to get something that we felt, we all felt would be better for the proposal. In that timeframe, we had on average four per year, and 10 were approved out of an overall 16 applications. From 2009 to 2020, we added a required public benefit in three, one of three categories: preservation of natural resources, affordable housing, or a historic preservation restriction on a structure that was in the application. We had 19 applications in total, which was less than two per year, and 14 were approved. Next slide, please. The purpose of the proposed amendments is to encourage development that will complement traditional streetscapes and neighborhoods. Things like filling in gap to openings on streetscapes and making sure that the proposed structures fit well with the neighborhood. But it does not increase neighborhood residential density. It will also provide an option to approve desirable development that the ZBA is not allowed to approve. And that's the, the real distinction on the Planning Board having access to this tool called Section 6C, whereby we can negotiate and also make sure that what the applicant is proposing is something that we truly want in the city. And reviewing these today, I realized we had left off one other purpose relevant statement, and that is that it supports the master plan land use for goal, which is to preserve the character of the city's neighborhoods while encouraging a diverse housing stock. Next slide, please. What we're trying to accomplish with the revision is to provide more predictability for the applicant, ensure development compatibility with the neighborhood, support the city's historic preservation and affordable housing goals, which is embedded in that land use goal from the master plan I just read, tighten up review criteria for two units on one parcel, and eliminate considerations for multi-unit uses. So again, we're focusing on just two units on one parcel and not anything to do with multi-units. The problems that the revision will correct have to do with the fact that the existing ordinance lets the Planning Board allow multiple residential buildings and multiple dwellings anywhere that they are allowed by ordinance. That encourages or results in a lack of predictability. And also, there are other ways of allowing larger developments that are much more effective, such as open space residential development or multifamily districts. Another problem that it will, the revision will correct has to do with the existing approval criteria that bear no relation whatsoever to the use of the land or the neighborhood impacts. And that seems to be a real disconnect, and we wanted to tighten that up. And finally, the existing regulation is very ambiguous. It suggests only two buildings, but it's been applied to developments with multifamily dwelling units on it. And it layers on another level of review that we feel is redundant and just not helpful to the applicant. Next slide, please. So here's the beginning, the comparison to help you sort this out. The existing ordinance allows more than one building and more than one dwelling unit in each of those buildings. The proposed amendment is really clear: two single-family buildings, full stop. Next, please. The layout in the existing ordinance says side-by-side or a building in the back that is 10% smaller than the building in the front. The proposed amendment talks about having side-by-side with a setback that's similar to the existing block, so it fills in the streetscape. Or you may have a lot that has frontage on two streets as in a corner lot or a through lot. And by the way, I'm going to show you photographs of each of these examples next. And finally, conversion of a garage or a carriage house with no more than 500 square feet of additional expansion. So let's look at what these are like. Here's an example, 346 High Street that we approved in 2004. I believe it was our first approval when we went to a special permit, side-by-side on the same street. The blue house is the original and the beige house was the addition. And they share a driveway that splits between the two of them. That would be allowed today in the new version. Next slide. Here you have a plan that shows a corner lot. The blue is the original structure on Oakland Street, sorry. And the pink is on the corner of Walnut and Oakland, and that's the new structure that was approved. And that was in 2015 when we required a public benefit, and the structure on Oakland was a historic house that was preserved. Next slide, please. Here we have an example of a through lot recently approved last year at 342 Merrimack Street. You see, the blue is sitting on Merrimack Street. That structure is a historic house and has or is in the process of having a preservation restriction put on it. And in the back, the pink is being added on Merrimack Court. It's one of these examples of where the lot goes all the way through, but you have access from a totally different street. So it doesn't add any extra traffic or congestion on, on the existing street. And the next slide, please. This is an example of a carriage house. You'll note on, it's on 9 Orange Street. It was approved in 2010. This actually wouldn't be approved today unless the blue, which is the original structure, were one dwelling unit. But I showed it to you as an example because you can see how a carriage house setback from the street, allowing off-street parking in front of it, does not add congestion to the neighborhood. So now I'm going to hand it over to Rick to go into more of the details of what we are proposing. Next slide, please.
Thank you. So the, the next piece is what are we proposing not to permit? And the key point is backyard infill. The, the current ordinance allows a, as was stated earlier, a second building to be placed in the rear yard, the rear of the principal dwelling, as long as it is 10% less coverage of floor area than the existing building. And the issue here is that that really changes the character of the neighborhood. In many cases, in the report, the house is near the front of the lot, and there is limited open space often, and it's in the rear of the lot. And so that open space tends to be shared by all the neighbors. So all the, the backyards of all of the houses tend to abut each other, and the many little pieces of open space add up to a larger open space. Next slide, please. So this is an example of a project that was proposed last year and that the Planning Board did not approve. And the existing dwelling is, as I just described, at the front of the lot. In this case, it is a through lot. It goes from Merrimack Street through to Howard Street. But Howard Street in that area is very constrained by topography, so the applicant wanted to put a new dwelling in the rear of the lot. And this is a case where that would have tremendously impacted a lot of the neighborhood by eliminating a lot of that shared open space, and it would have changed the character of the neighborhood quite a bit. So that was really one of the proposals that really led us to say we needed to do something about this ordinance. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go through some of the differences between the existing ordinance and what is being proposed. So in terms of the application process and the standards for development, the existing ordinance requires an applicant to prepare a plan demonstrating that the same number of residential buildings could be developed through a normal subdivision process. And that's really, we felt an unnecessary burden on the applicant because really what we wanted to do is give standards for what we wanted and not necessarily see what the, what different alternatives were. And so the proposed amendments are to require the development to, the, I'm sorry, to require the lot to comply with a lot area standard for a two-family dwelling in that zoning district and to require both structures to comply with the setback standards for the district. And so that sort of gives you the, the outline of the, the envelope of the density and, and how it fits in with the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So under the existing ordinance, the project must provide a public benefit in one of three ways, and it's a choice. An applicant can do something to provide affordable housing, can preserve a historic building if there is one, and can preserve open space. But those public benefits do not necessarily have to be on or related to the lot. And so there's really not a, there's a disconnect, and and there's a disconnect in some ways between the benefits and the impact of the neighborhood. So in this case, we're proposing that if the lot has a historic building, it must be protected with a preservation restriction, and the applicant must provide a financial contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust in any case. Next slide, please. And in terms of what the Planning Board must find in order to be able to grant a, a special permit under the existing ordinance, it's, it's fairly vague. The, the board must find that there's a reasonable alternative to other allowed developments of the parcel, so it's really a judgment call. And we must find that there's a clear public benefit, including but not limited to any of those three items that I mentioned on previous slide. In the proposed ordinance, we've tried to be more specific. We've tried to say that rather than just saying it's a reasonable alternative, we must, we're saying that the design and layout will be consistent with the established character, scale, massing, and density of the neighborhood, that the location and design of the two buildings, or the second building really, will be compatible with adjacent properties and will not significantly reduce privacy of abutters, and that the second building will be equally or more beneficial to the neighborhood than a subdivision or a two-family dwelling. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, what we're trying to do, I just am recapping something that Bonnie said. We're trying to provide more protection for the neighborhood to protect the character of the neighborhood and ensure more predictability for the owner, the developer, and the neighbors. So that concludes the presentation regarding the Section 6C, but there are, there's also related to this, a proposed change to the definition of multifamily, and Jennifer Blanchett is going to pick that up.
Good evening. The revision to, the proposed revision to the multifamily definition really came about by because of the fact that the Planning Board has on occasion used 6C to allow for larger developments to subdivide their multifamily structures into smaller structures within a development project. And in an effort to allow the Planning Board to still have that ability, this proposed amendment was put forward. It would still require that each of the multifamily structures have, the first one would have to have three units, and each subsequent one would need to have two in order to fall under this definition. But again, that, this was put in in order to maintain the flexibility that the Planning Board currently has under the existing 6C, should this new version be moved forward.
All right, is that the end of the presentation, Bonnie? Counsel?
Yes, yes, it is.
All right.
So I'd send it back to you.
Okay, do we want to take public comment at this time? I think that would be appropriate. Is there any public comment?
And I see we have a few folks in the audience. You can use the Zoom raise hand feature to click that button if you'd like to speak. I'm not seeing any takers, cheers.
All right. So let's bring it back into the, the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Committee. Counselor Igerman, do you have any questions? I mean, I remember when we discussed this in our last meeting, I think one of the comments you had was should we just get rid of 6C in the first place? Is there, do you have any more thoughts on that one?
Yeah, I do, if I may.
Go for it.
Yeah, so to recap, and I want to thank Chair Sontag and the Vice Chair Tainter for coming to our committee meeting. That was, you know, extra credit, so thank you. What I was saying then is, you know, if the, the reason that we have 6C is because really our lot area requirements are, are not realistic, which is true. I mean, and we went through an effort with a consultant a few years ago to actually study what the existing conditions are, say in words, you know, 1, 2, 3, and then come up with a mean average or a mode average of what lot sizes really are for single-family homes. And, you know, they're smaller than, than what our code requires in, in some parts. It, it's not uniform in the report, but JAPA, which I'm going to build up to in a second, they're definitely smaller than current lot minimums. So we could change our lot minimums if that's what we want to do. And then the other point I had was, we, we have talked a lot on a policy basis about carriage houses and garages and especially up on High Street. If, if there's, you know, a big old house and it has a large barn, you know, historically there have been conversions to make that into a unit. And what the Ward Councilors generally care about is to make sure you can park it still. And as I understand it, you know, 6C does not give relief on parking. So you could control it with 6C. But my point was, well, if we really want a carriage house ordinance, let's do a carriage house ordinance. And that was my argument last time. Since then, I have to say, there is a case that is now coming before you where, you know, it's answered the question that I made, which is why do we need 6C? And that is 2125 and 27 Hancock Street. And that's going to be before you in early April. It came to my attention because there was a hiccup having to do with the D-COT, the Demolition Control Overlay District. And the, the developer, I didn't know Jake Haswell was going to be on, but it's, we're lucky he's on tonight. But I've looked at those plans, and it's, it's, it is a weird situation. He has two lots separated by a common alley with its, which predates, you know, he's not creating it now. It actually already exists on the assessor's map as some kind of private way. And the two lots are quite large. They're each over 16,000 square feet. And they're surrounded by single-family homes, which are on lots that are more like 6,000 square feet. So he came in to the zoning board. Yeah, thank you. And there's a, a commercial industrial building, a pretty ugly one on the left. That's 21-25 Hancock. And then on the right, 27, and they're both about the same size, 16,000 square feet. There's an historic building. It was inventory. It's a very modest building. You know, it's not a mansion. But it's old. You know, it's about 1917, we think. And it's on the inventory and it's listed as contributory. So that means he can only demolish one, one out of the four walls, you know, 25% of the exterior. So to make that happen, what he wants to do is two, two-family houses. And the challenge is, well, how do you do that and not destroy the historic building on the right? And I've met with him, and I've talked to staff about it, and I've noodled on it. And the fact is, 6C, whether it's the current 6C, which I agree is flawed. I would not want to stand pat on the existing 6C for all the reasons that the presenters gave. It's not a great ordinance. But under the new 6C, he could preserve this building, you know, put a deed restriction on it, and figure out a way to design it so that he can make his project pencil. You know, he can, he can get two single-family homes on the right-hand lot that you're looking at. And then, you know, a two-family on the left, and it wouldn't violate any of the intent of what you're doing in your ordinance. And, you know, so he would have, he would end up with four units on 32,000 square feet of private land, which is pretty fair. And so, you know, my sort of, you know, conclusion last time is, well, when would we ever need 6C? Well, we just, I just came up with one where it works. So that's my comment. I had other questions, but I want to hear from other people, too. You know, questions, details, like, you know, making sure I'm right that the parking will still be accommodated, because again, that's a big deal in every neighborhood. I still want to talk about the, the sort of impact payment of $10 a square foot. Not quite sure what to make of that yet. And I want to reserve judgment on the definition of multifamily, because I think that's a different issue. I just want to talk about 6C. Thank you.
Chair Sontag?
I'd like to ask the other Planning Board members to speak to Counselor Agarwal's questions. I believe, well, both Tanya and Don, you worked on the affordable housing contribution. Why don't we start with that one? Do you want to explain how you came up with $10 per square foot?
Don, do you want me to take that one? Go ahead, Tanya. I'll just take it. So when Don and I were charged with sort of looking at the, the impact fee, I think before there was just this, this thought that, that you would either contribute to, you would, you would have a preservation restriction, which, you know, we still think is important, or you might provide affordable housing or open space. And I think in, in the, in the examples that we saw, all of them were just coming in with the preservation restriction, which doesn't really, doesn't really cost the developer anything. And so we said, how do we, how do we help to minimize the, possibly the second, the second structure? And, and also get some money for affordable housing, which we think is important because, because clearly the second single-family home is not, building is not always, is not really being built for affordable housing. And in some ways, you're taking away like a two-family, which maybe would be a more affordable, you know, unit in a house. So we looked across the state at different, to see if there were anything similar to 6C, and there really isn't a lot of similar types of zoning provisions like this one. But we did look at development impact fees, which are a little bit different, but, but similar, you know, for what we could see. And, and we landed on $10 a square foot because we thought that might, it would, the, the cost would probably be somewhere between 20,000 to 30,000, because I think most of the units are 2,000 to 3,000 square feet. And, and that would be enough to, to put towards, you know, affordable housing. It's comparable to sort of, I think, you know, maybe what a contribution would be through, through our inclusionary zoning. And it also might make a developer think about building a larger, you know, maybe they would say, I don't want to build a 4,000-square-foot house or second, second property or second building, because I have to pay 40,000. And maybe I would build something a little smaller. So that was where we came up with the 10. I think the Affordable Housing Trust was hoping it would be a little bit more. And our feeling and the Planning Board, all the members agreed that the 10 seemed reasonable. And, and that, that would be our recommendation, and that if the city council felt they needed more, that they certainly could come back and ask for more. And it also is something that I think, I think Bonnie and Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, we may not have written it in the ordinance, the amount. We might have, we might have even left that out so that way it could be set. You know, it wasn't actually, and it wouldn't require an amendment change, but that it could be, could be changed, but I can't remember.
You can see it right now on this. Are you looking at the screen? Because it's there.
I have it on my, oh, it is in the ordinance. Okay.
It is.
But that's another option, too, is we could just have it so that it's something that could be revisited by the city council, too. So that, that's it on the, that's, that's where we came down on it, on the fee. So.
Don, did you want to add any more to that?
No, the only thing I would, would add to what Tanya says, at the end of the day, you, you probably assume this is, it, it, it's not a science. It's, it's more of an art. And at the end of the day, the $10 seem to be a reasonable number, a figure, as Tanya said. That's all.
Okay, so Counselor Agarwal, do you want to have a conversation with them about that right now and sort it out?
Yeah, just because we're on, just because we're on that topic. I mean, I, yeah. So I, I mean, the first premise is whenever you have a fee like this, you know, it, it has to be, it has to meet nexus. There has to be a nexus between what's being proposed. It has to meet nexus. There has to be a nexus between what's being proposed and and what's being asked for. It's constitutional. There is, that's easy, you know. The nexus being there's. As 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 Board Member Hartford said, you know. By building two single family homes, they're probably going to be arguably less affordable. Than two units and a two-family. So I can see the nexus. So then the next question is. Is it roughly proportional? And that word roughly, that's in the law, too. Doesn't have to be exactly proportional, and it's not scientific provision. I I wouldn't go so far as to say it's an art. Because I don't know if a court would like that, but but it's rough proportionality. And I see where you're getting at. I mean. You know, what is the, what is the impact? What is the delta maybe on the value of the house, the single family house versus a. A unit within a two-family? I think that that may be the proportionality of what the developer is getting and what the impact is on society. I don't have the answer. I'm just trying to give you the framework of what the right number is, because, you know, this has to come to the city council, and we have to adjust it. And then, of course, there's a practical point where we don't want to make it so high that nobody ever. Ever, ever uses this thing. It's just too high. It kills the pro forma. So I I I respect, I respect the effort that was made by, by, by the board members. I just want, I wanted to hear the rationale. I get it. And I guess I want to think about it. And then, you know, we can apply it, you know, this, this proposal on Hancock Street gives us an opportunity. It is about a three thousand square foot house. So instead of a, a two-family of about six thousand square feet. The developer would get two single families of three thousand each. So that would be a thirty, roughly thirty thousand dollar. Hit. And then. He he would have to, he would have to do a deed restriction on the preserved old building. He's still under the D COT. He can still demolish as much as twenty-five percent, and it would not lose its contributory status. It would not trigger D COT review. So it's not that he can't touch the building, but he has to very much limit what he does to the building and then put a preservation restriction on it. So I can see that. And I mean, it was the first slide that you showed, I guess, getting off now, Bonnie getting off the fee, because I don't really know what to do with it now.
Yeah.
You know, it is kind of similar to the two thousand five example you gave up on High Street. Where you had an historic building, you know, it's very different, because the historic building you say it was of a wealthy eighteenth century family, and this is a modest working man's house, but. Kind of the same.
Those are, but, excuse me, but we've been advised by the historical commission that even a a working person's house.
Well, I'm agreeing.
You know, is worth saying, we always focus on these big fancy houses, but we had an example where we did preserve one that was, you know, of that nature. So that's.
Yeah, no, no, I'm agreeing with you. I I I'm with you, because again, the, in the inventory they did in the nineteen eighties, they did not distinguish, you know, that's, they don't say, well, did a rich person live here? Yes, it's historic. You know, that's not, you know, so I'm saying the same principle seems to apply to this case. I do worry, you know, other cases. Here it makes sense. You know, I I I don't know how how much more, but I think with the changes that you're proposing. And again, I I want to ask, I'm not missing anything on the parking, right? There's no parking relief here. So they still.
Oh, no, absolutely not. In fact, they must have off-street parking per our our ordinance anyway.
Right. And that's why actually, this is a good case for this developer, because he has, he has frontage all over the place. You know, he's got. He's got, you know, because he has that T-shaped roadway. There'll be a private road, but that still counts under our code. So I thought that was interesting, and I wanted it to bring, bring to people's attention. Okay, the other other question I had was six D dog. It didn't look like, I mean, do we need to amend six B if we do six C? Or are they, they don't work together? I I, that's a question. I'm not being facetious. I don't have an answer.
Jennifer, are you familiar enough with that to know what he's talking about?
If you give me a moment, I might be able to comment.
Okay, oh, there it is.
It has to do with spacing the buildings. I just want to make sure that, because. You know, six C also says things about spacing the buildings and about. You know, meeting setbacks. Both residential buildings shall comply with the setback requirements for principal single-family buildings. That's what it says in the proposed amendment. Does this contradict this, or? What do we, what do we do with this? Because there's a different special permit. I mean, if I read six B, right, six D, little A. So a developer would would first go to the planning board and get a special permit from the planning board for six C. For permission to do two single families on one lot. And meeting all the front side and rear yards. And then the developer would go to the zoning board of appeals and get a different special permit to modify the yard dimensions. I'm not saying that's good or bad, but it seems a little crazy to send them to two different bodies.
May I respond, Chair?
Please.
Sure.
So that's a really good point. You know, the the six C proposed change. Requires both buildings to meet the external yard requirements on the lot. But this one talks about creating an internal yard requirement. And I think this is a good idea, but I agree that perhaps this should be changed. To make the planning board the special permit granting authority to avoid having, making somebody go through two separate steps.
I think that would solve it. I mean, it just, as it is. You know, they may, a developer may end up having to go to two boards, but to the extent we can minimize that, I I'd like to.
That's a good point.
Is that the only change needed, going from zoning board of appeals to planning board?
Yeah.
Let's see.
And it wouldn't always be used, but when it was necessary, they'd be right there with us and could have this application heard as well.
I I think it might make sense to try to integrate the provisions of this into six C and to. Basically remove six D, because it is kind of confusing to have two separate. Sections that deal with the same situation, which is two buildings on a on a lot.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I I would sort of agree, Rick. I just think we need to be cognizant that we're talking specifically about five or a six D little A. And that there are a B and a C on the following page. So before we rush to do that, I want to consider those other two sections.
And and I'm going to take back what I just said, because I'm now looking at six D little A and. Thinking that this actually could apply to. A project that is not a six C project, perhaps something more like the project that's off Parker Street. I guess it's called Heinz Way, where you've got multiple multi-family dwellings on a lot. So so that might apply here. Does, this doesn't say two single family dwellings. It says two.
I know, but but hold on, I I. B and C talk about a non-residential building.
Right, right.
With the residential building.
No, I agree.
Different, yeah.
Right. So I think that I I take back my my recommendation about merging these two.
No, no, but but let me finish the thought. I mean, we passed the amendment to six C. It says, except as otherwise permitted. Only one building containing residential units shall be erected on a lot. So are we saying that means you can always mix a residential and a non-residential building by right? That doesn't sound right.
I I do think this needs more careful consideration.
Okay.
For further review.
Right. Chair, if I could, this is Andy Port. I just wanted to note for, as a procedural issue, just that the advertisement for the hearing was dealing along with section six C. So if we. And want to touch section six D, we might need to re-advertise, just a reminder.
Understood. I mean, if we need to do some modifications to what we've got already, that's certainly doable. No sense doing it two different times. So.
But what I do hear is, well, we don't know. We should look at the whole thing, but it's sounding like it's less likely that they would be combined. Which means that we can deal with six C and the proposal before us tonight separately.
I mean, would it, would it truly be a violation of due process and noticing if you just reconcile little A? Because because again, if you don't, can't you say in six C, and the planning board can handle six D A as well? Instead of the zoning board? In other words, in the absence of a six C, in the absence of a six C, an applicant, say all they need is to change the. Yard dimensions or whatever, they can go to the zoning board of appeal. But. If they're already going to you, are are we really constrained by due process and the notice that we can't reference six D? That's a question.
Well, this is Andy Port. I I don't have any objection to consolidation. I agree with the idea of, you know, again, however you as a policy want to regulate the type of development. I agree with the consolidation. It's just that from experience, I know that if if there's a question on the procedures that we went through. Because we only reference section six C, there might be question as to whether or not.
Okay.
If, yeah.
All right, okay.
Let's keep having discussion, and I I just wanted to let Counselor Igerman know that we do have a hard stop. With what, depending on what we go do at six fifty, the planning board's going to need to make a decision on where they go, because I think someone has to leave before seven. So we can just keep talking to the next ten minutes or so.
Okay, I'll I'll wrap it up. I I guess, I guess.
It's a good conversation. Keep going.
Well, well, on six C, again, I I'm now converted, you know, where I think I want, because of, I have now a case on my mind, and I've been conferring with the Ward One counselor. It's in his word. It's not in my word. You know, I, you know, I now see that it's merits. I guess there are two things I wanted to do before we called it a night. One is, I wanted to hear from Jake Haswell, if he's willing, that I'm right, that he can, I'm on the right track, because if he doesn't want to do a six C, then I'm wasting my time. And then the other is that I am ready to talk about five E, the definition, because I think that's a different policy question.
Okay.
Well, I don't quite understand Counselor Igerman. Why it would matter about one particular applicant determining whether or not you. If I heard you correctly, whether or not you would support the revisions to six C. Is that what you're saying?
Because I couldn't, I couldn't think of an example of why I, on a policy basis, would want to keep six C. I was thinking, well, if I really want to, you know. Tweak those, the lot areas, I'll put in an ordinance to tweak the lot areas. And if I really want to have a carriage house ordinance, I want to do that. But then this thing came along, and I found. That you and 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 Rick have nailed it, that your your ordinance actually finds a way to protect the public interest for his weird situation.
And they, and there could be others. That's why I'm pushing a little bit on this. It's another tool that we have, even if we don't use it very often. I don't see the harm in leaving it on the books. And I go back to the comment about the fact that. We can't do this through the zoning board. And and there are times when. A huge structure, two-family unit would just be so inappropriate. And I'm, I'm nervous that we would. Rue the day that we threw out all of six C. Because we just couldn't find enough examples of where it might be used. So. Back to your positioning on, you know, the other alternatives to it, is there any reason that it would? Not, should not be kept on the books? I mean, it's not just a just in case. We found use for it, and it does provide two benefits to the city where there, you know, is a, is a historic cast. We'd be saving it. And the affordable housing contribution.
I I I think, I think the key, I think the key that I would not, the difference between its abuse before. Where where it was filling in the sort of rear lots of of long narrow lots. The the concern that we discussed about before is that they were not complying with setback requirements. Is that right? You know, they were filling in the rear yard. So I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, exactly. And with that taken out, that deals with this, you know, concern that several of you mentioned in the prior meeting around infill.
Yeah, but 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 then there's six D, and and what's to stop the developer? And I want to be, I want to be smart here. To then get relief from the setback, and and we're right back where we were. So, well, I guess, I guess the idea is the planning board would know what's going on. You wouldn't grant the six C. If you knew that they had gotten a six D.
Well, and can I just interject? I mean, they can do that now, right? I mean, because six C is there now. And I will say, I will say, Counselor Igerman, I I am with you in that. When I first started looking at this, I said, why do we need this? And it was, it was probably one of the reasons why I wanted to join the planning board was because of the. The infill projects and. You know, I I thought it was, it was impacting the neighborhoods. But I have seen, I think that the planning board. Has has been very thoughtful in some of the six C projects that have come forward and thoughtful in putting this ordinance together and. And thinking through sort of what we don't want to see. And I, and I think there are instances where, like the corner lots and the lot that you're talking about, Counselor. I think the where this could work. And so, so in that instance, I think keeping on the books doesn't, in fixing it, fixing some of the issues doesn't hurt. So that that was my pitch.
Okay, but. I I mean, if the chairs would indulge me, I I mean, the only developer we have on the line, I mean, I I'm not trying to favor one developer. I'm trying to get input and reality check on it. If I follow it or not.
I'm I'm fine with having Mr. Caswell speak.
Okay.
I think Andy, you have to handle that one.
Yeah, sorry, Jay, you'll have to unmute on your end as well.
Hi, how are you? I didn't expect to be speaking tonight.
Yeah, sorry to put you on the spot, but you're the only developer we have, so.
Like Jared was saying, so. I kind of got buzzsawed through the project I'm doing down in Hancock Street. I was trying to follow the rules and the parameters set with the, the R two. The R two district that is down there now. So, you know, it. It forces you to do a two-family, the lot's big, or I'm not getting the big spiel, but the lot's bigger, force you to get a two-family. But it also triggered something that I didn't realize the trigger was the D C O D, which I thought I was following. And then, you know, everything got backed up, you know. I don't need to go into there. And the only solution that actually makes sense to, you know, still do something that doesn't. You know, that little house is situated in the middle of that sixteen thousand square foot lot. The only that that satisfies the historic district, the historic rules in the zoning rules and everything else is for me to separate from what I had drawn. I don't want to get into a whole, like, I didn't expect, you know, I thought, I thought what I was doing was. Correct, written by the ordinance, you know, all along, six C would have been the preferred route. So. You know, it just turned into a situation where something like a six C, just like this project just sits, you know, I mean, I don't, I mean. It just looks better, you know, because I hear the, what I was getting from the zoning board was massing, 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 whereas. I don't think they realized that I had, that was a requirement by the zoning that I had to attach. So it was, you know, a situation like that, I think, the only one that really makes sense because of the size of the lot and the land use would be. That you could detach on one parcel. And the only other alternative is, you'll end up with a situation where. You have these two huge single-family lots, and as a developer, you're forcing a direction. You gotta build a road, you gotta do that, you know. What's better for the town? Big, huge houses down there or a few modest ones? So I think that's. I'm in the process of working through where I go from here. I mean, I see you guys April ninth, but that's where I am now. So like. A little bit of like clarity on which direction saves a lot of, you know, spending money where you don't need to spend money. Hope that helps. I don't know if it did or didn't.
Thank you, Mr. Caswell.
So that's helpful to me. You know, again, I I, I'm not a builder. I want to make sure. I'm rooted in reality.
Excuse me, this is Don Walters. I've got six fifty-one. I could probably afford another minute or two at the most, so I just want to let you know if I'm, I'm not there. I'll be, excuse myself. And and just for you, I do have another City Newburyport committee meeting, so I'm surely not trying to. Take light of this important matter. Thank you.
No, so I, thank you, Don. And we haven't discussed the multifamily definition yet either.
Yeah, I I I'll just, I'll just cut to the chase on that one. So on on the, you know, and I I asked Jennifer about this one. First, I kind of struggled to understand the wording, but I get it now. The idea is that. First, I kind of struggled to understand the wording, but I get it now. The idea is that to allow multifamily use to be defined as more than one building on the same lot. And I think, you know, one of the things that you've just changed, if we pass the 6C, is that it's only two one families on one lot. And that one of the things like on Orange Street would not be would no longer be allowed. We already have something that's been carved up into multifamily. And then you do yet another use 6C to add more units in the back. It sounds like that's something we don't want to do. So I don't know why you would change this definition. I just don't see. I I just think it's a distraction. I I don't. And and I would I would rather that not go forward.
Jennifer, I remember having this discussion in January. Do you there was a better reason that went along with the with the ordinance? And I'm failing to remember what it was, but. I I simply was trying to preserve something that the city was currently doing. If it is no longer the pleasure of the board and the council to continue that practice, we certainly could could keep the definition as is. But this was put forward understanding that we were proposing a change to 6C that would change that to simply allowing it with two single families. And so in making that change, it affected the multifamily definition. And I, you know, just bringing it up to the attention of everyone to consider. Certainly, you know, if if, as Council Igerman says, it's not something that the city wishes to, you know, keep as a as a flexibility, then then it could stay as is. But like I said, it was just it was brought up because the change to 6C does impact some approvals as the board has been making them. So with that, Chair Sontag, how do you want to proceed, since we need to wrap it up in two minutes?
I'd like to separate out the two and just take a vote on a recommendation to ask the city council to adopt the revised 6C ordinance. If that would be appropriate, I need a motion for that, members.
So move, Bonnie?
Thank you, Don. Second?
I'll second, Alden.
Thank you. I'll take a roll call. Rick?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. So we'll go with that recommendation as voted. I don't see where there's any conclusion on the 103, Use 103. Let's.
How do you want to handle that one? What are the options, Andy? Is this a leave it in? Leave the public hearing open? How does it work?
Well, if you want to continue discussions as bodies together, I would recommend keeping the hearing together, you know, in whatever portions you're dealing with. But if you if you feel comfortable breaking off separately, that's fine, too. But if you want to continue discussing these pieces, you know, in any way together, I would suggest just joining, keeping the hearing going.
Well, you can buy for case. I mean, you can buy for case.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So let's let's keep it open and take a motion to keep the hearing open on Use 103.
Can I, Bonnie, do we need to? I mean, does the planning board need to keep it open?
Well, then we don't, then then it's not on our agenda. And so we would just leave it to the city council to decide.
Yeah, but didn't we already discuss it?
We have discussed it, but I mean, as part of a public hearing, don't we want to have input from everybody until we make a recommendation to city council?
We could. I just, that's fine.
Yeah, let's just keep it open. I think it's safer. That way gives us more flexibility. So you want to make a motion to that effect?
Sure.
Thanks. And second?
Second, Rick.
Okay, and I'll call roll. Rick?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Don, I believe, is gone, and I'll say yes. So we'll we'll just do it.
All right.
And I will close the planning board meeting at this point.
Counselor, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, recommended the full city council that it adopt the amendment to 6C. But with an amendment to strike the proposed change to Use 103.
Second? All right. Roll call. Counselor Ivan?
I'm in favor.
You are?
Yep.
All right, as am I. All right. Was that to the amendment, or is that the, well, that was to the?
Yeah, so the whole thing. So I think with our recommendation, I would make a recommendation to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Moved. All right.
I will, yes.
Yes.
All right. And we didn't have a formal motion to adjourn, but let's assume we did.
Fair enough. Thank you all.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you, Andy. And Linda.
You're welcome. Good night.